Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor Ray Allen here.
Yes, sir.
Mr. West?
Yes, sir.
All right. To begin with, I have an invitation from our Mr. Clint Hollingsworth tonight.
What's your question?
Lord Jesus, thank you for tonight, Lord. Thank you all for being able to get together. Uh, Lord Jesus, thank you for this city and everything that you're doing, uh, right now over this county and in each other's lives and the bright future ahead of us, Lord. Thank you for Veterans Day and each person that served, um, in the past and now serving will be in their safety and protecting us here at home, Lord. We definitely, uh, appreciate all the things that is, uh, and Lord Jesus, thank you for, uh, everything that you're doing right now, Lord, and, uh, all of our lives and every individual here tonight and be with us, uh, this will be your name.
Good day.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. Sixty-four call Mr. West?
Mayor Max A. Townsend?
Here.
Councilmember Andy Page?
Here.
Councilmember Johnny Cook?
Here.
Council President Oliver G. Junior?
Here.
Councilmember Jeanne Folsom?
Here.
And Councilmember Clint Hollingsworth?
Here.
Next on the agenda is the reading of the minutes and approval, uh, approval of those minutes from October twenty-fourth. To do that, we need to poll the council. What is the pleasure of the council?
I believe that we extend the rules so that we will not have to read them.
That's what I was going for. And we have a second. Second, we saw the council.
Councilmember Andy Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnny Cook?
Aye.
Council President Oliver G. Junior?
Aye.
Councilmember Jeanne Folsom?
Aye.
Councilmember Clint Hollingsworth?
Aye.
Now, I understand the motions to approve those minutes from October twenty-fourth. What is the pleasure of the council? I make a motion to approve the minutes as written. Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. Having none, all in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I would like to add, um, that number eleven under Roman numeral nine, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into release of C S X transportation subject to the insurance requirement approval.
As a form of a motion, we have a second. Second. Have a second. All in favor of adding this to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is approved. Is there any other additions or deletions?
Mr. President, I've got one. I would like to add that number twelve under Roman numeral nine, uh, as mayor, the contract drew the bill to have with professional services to finish up the state, uh, of all the...
Uh, that's a form of a motion also. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, seconds. All in favor of adding that to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion also carries. Any other additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. President, I have another one, uh, room, uh, number thirteen on Roman numeral nine. It's, uh, the resolution two thousand four hundred and eighteen to donate, uh, surplus ladder truck five oh nine, take that commission, go donate it to, uh, county, uh, crime facility.
Fire Association. All right. That's a form of a motion.
Yes, a second.
Have a second. All in favor of adding that to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is also granted. Any other additions or deletions to the agenda? You got it, though? That's all of which we move into reports of our stating committees. Police committee, Councilmember Andy Page?
Uh, hello, before, Mr. President, just shortcut.
All right.
Uh, P. Green?
Sir. I want to commend the police doing outstanding job Saturday and pray that you would have passed that over to Chief, no problem. I'll do that. And pass it over to the, uh, all else. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Lot of confidence on your good work.
Thank you.
Mr. Freddie Day, while you're in the audience with us tonight, I want to say thank you for taking the role as enforcement officer, and you're pretty much already that anyway, but being in the paper and letting people come to you and ask you questions and your knowledge from your background, uh, for the state has really been a huge help to us, and so I just want to say thank you.
I agree with you.
Yep. Yes, sir. Fire committee, uh, we did have a report tonight. See, I'd like to come forward and present something to the mayor, if that's all right?
Yes, sir. Sure would. On, uh, we had, uh, Southern Fire, and eighty-one, we want to present the supply to the fire in the council, and their dedication and the leadership of city of power, and priority ladder truck.
Has everybody seen this new truck? Uh, in the first round of the playoffs, we had the ladder truck at the stadium, and I tell you, the people really did enjoy that. I got a note from Coach written. He said, "It really did add to the atmosphere having that truck there, hearing that sirens go off every time they stole it." And I think they were going to run that truck in the ground at school, which was, uh, I didn't know. But we're very proud of this, and also, let's just also mention that children at East Elementary have designed this truck, to pick out, designed it in colors, and they did a magnificent job. Russell, do you have anything to do with that?
I painted a drawing.
You did?
I didn't have a picture of the road, so it's a student pride in the truck.
Thanks, Chief.
I'll make sure everyone heard that. Three winners of the design.
Three winners of the design of the truck will be driven to student in the new truck as student pride.
They'll all go to East Elementary, so it'll be fun for them.
And we've got T-shirts with the truck on the back of it.
Chief, with you.
Thank you, Chief. You look great for Friday.
Sanitation committee, Councilmember Johnny Cook?
I have two things, Mr. President. Number one, Larry, I want to commend your people for this weekend. We had, uh, a parade, we had Christmas open house and corn, we picked the moon around, eating, drinking, food wrappers, and throwing candy.
Snow.
Snow. And, uh, I got a little shit across the bridge over there. But, uh, the people that were here on Sunday made numerous comments of how clean the city was after a parade and the large activity on Saturday. Also, one of the major department on winning the state pals award, uh, that's one of all the cities in the state, and it's just a tremendous testament to y'all's efforts, and I'm just, I'm very proud of the, how y'all worked and succeeded in it.
Let's give it up.
And, uh, same words to ladies by the belt, who that are.
Mayor, thanks for all your service. Next on the agenda, street committee, Councilmember Clint Hollingsworth?
We do a great job every day, and we appreciate what you're doing. You get it done before anybody ever asks you to, so, uh, I just appreciate you being here, and you guys are doing a great job.
Next, finance committee, Councilmember Jeanne Folsom?
Uh, now report.
Next on the agenda is our report from our mayor, from Mr. Mayor, uh, Mayor Max A. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to, uh, just mention that last week was last week, we had the great bridge of going to Atlanta, Georgia with our parking wreck department, and they were up for the gold medalist finals. That's across the United States of America, and that's a fantastic honor that has the parking wreck up for this grand award. Would y'all please stand up and park the wreck back here? And we, we will, we know the... I think y'all will say your job and what's so outstanding about a meeting like that, you can also come back to do ideas, you're, uh, rejuvenated, and, and like we said over there, we're not losers, uh, it just to be up for that award is an honor. And eventually, we've got golden nugget out there, we're going to pull that baby in, we're going to bring it home. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Thank you, guys.
Oh, yeah, one other thing, I would just like to also recognize Mr. Johnny Cook on his birthday. You know, that's a...
We're excited, man.
That's a question, you know, when you come into the council meeting on your birthday night, I'm curious why it's late for you to get home, you've got a big steak cooked and a birthday. Happy birthday, man.
Johnny, want to add anything to the award that we talked about, uh, before we wanted to the agenda?
I, we're just very proud, it's, uh, a great honor, it's the first time in anybody that's ever been nominated, and this is the top four of the park and recreation departments in the nation, so I'm very proud of this staff, they do a wonderful job, and we're a city that supports us so much, so.
In our category, within cities that have a population of twenty-five thousand or less, they have the cities in the United States are twenty-five thousand or less, and we're in the top four.
For the second year, I'm not...
That's, that was a big order for him, and then he's full.
Thousands, thousands of...
Thousands of people.
Me. Just trying, I know you're the chairman of the board for the parking wrecks, but we all stood up, and then your hats and button stood up for you, so we're getting it. Mayor, is he ready?
Yes, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Next on the agenda, some comments from anyone that is not on the agenda, I know we had one who said Andrew's up front, yeah, come on, Andrew, touch the podium, state your name and address for everyone, please, sir.
My name is David Andrews, I reside in nine thirteen Cleveland Avenue Northwest, still over here behind the ducts. And, uh, many of you probably already know this, or already pay for this, because if you don't know, I am a candidate on the public primary ticket for Chairman of County Commission. Um, I'm designing this office because I see some things that I want to do differently than what's being done now. And, uh, being employed by the city, uh, I've seen things, uh, working with the city that I know that the county can employ that they're not doing now to make it a better place. And one of them is, has to do with parks and recreation, uh, seeing how wonderful the city parks is, and I want to use the city as a model for what the county parks can be, because I know they can, they can do the same. And also, me working with the street department, I see a total difference in how the city runs our streets and the county owns their roads, and, uh, I want to use us as a model for the county road department, too. So, uh, primary is March thirteenth, and I ask for your prayers and support, and ask for your vote. March thirteenth, two thousand and what? Thank you very much.
You'd like this change, Andrew? Anyone else that's not on the agenda that like to come aboard, does need to at this time? Having none, we'll move to petitions, applications, complaints, appeals, communications. First on the agenda is a request from Court Clerk Dana Phillips to purchase a one desktop computer from Dell on state bid list, uh, budgeted amount fourteen hundred and seventy-seven dollars. What is the pleasure of the council?
I'll say it.
Have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And remind everyone that it's budgeted. Uh, that has been approved and seen on the agenda. I can get this laptop to work. How do I go back, man? Secondly, uh, agenda tonight is a request from the street superintendent Rick Henry to purchase two desktop computers on a Dell state bid list and budgeted amount two thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars. It's a pleasure of the council. I make a motion to approve this request. Say. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number three, request from Water and Sewer Superintendent Chris Freeman to purchase one laptop and two desktop computers from Dell on the state bid list, uh, budgeted amount five thousand dollars. What is the pleasure of the council?
I may approve this request.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It is approved. Uh, number four is a request from Chris Freeman also for a pipe blazer from Earl Dudley and Associates in a budgeted amount of six thousand dollars. What is the pleasure of the council? I make a motion to approve this request.
Second.
Any further discussion? Having none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The request is granted. Number five is a request from Robert Huddleston of the Eagle Scouts to discuss the Eagle Scout project to replace the trees at East Elementary School with the autumn blaze and maple trees. Is that correct? Yes, sir. Come forward and talk about that.
Yes, sir.
Come on out. Like you said, your name and address, I've told you before already. Yes, sir. There's a picture of one of them.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Uh, like you said, my name is Rob Huddleston. I'm, uh... Your address. Your address.
Yeah, what's your address? For the room?
Uh, Brooklyn. No, your address. Where do you live? Big team, where can I come and drive? Uh, four piece on my album.
Thank you.
Sorry to catch you. Really good. Okay, okay. Um, like you said, my name is, uh, Rob Huddleston here, uh, um, from group two nineteen to discuss a Eagle Scout project over at East Elementary School where, uh, where, uh, the tornado, uh, that, uh, in that station wiped out, uh, most of the trees in the sewer area over in that part of town. Um, my project is to plant the, uh, autumn blaze maple on the, uh, inside fence line of the, uh, school, not touching Third Avenue, just along the side of the, uh, State Hall and that really big white house, the time hall. Um, then that's my project, uh, my plan is to plant fifteen of them, uh, total, and, uh, a few, uh, each tree costs eighty-nine dollars, and I've, uh, already gotten, um, several donated by Sunday school classes, that first, um, that business by a few, uh, individuals. I'm asking for approval of this project. Um, a project started for this project, but, uh...
And you talk with the school board?
Yes. The school board and everyone there, all in favor of it.
You've got the utilities marked and all that, it ain't really hard to find, for you, I haven't, I haven't.
If you've done all that homework, then is it approved as your request?
Second. Have a motion to approve. Have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? Having none, all in favor of going forward with this project, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Mr. President.
I thank you for, uh, and I thank you for doing this project, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob. Mayor, I just want to go back to closing that, because you know how my wife has got trees.
Yes, sir. Number six, on the agenda, request Mr. Woody Jacob, see, I don't believe I see his name. Uh, excuse me?
It's probably working.
It's probably working, it's right at the ramp, he's tagging the rail up at the four oh two fifth street southwest for a noise permit on November eighteenth for a live band. Does anyone know these on half? Is it extra for him? All right, that's what I figured. All right, for a noise permit, what is the parameter that we want to give, like we did everyone else? As far as times?
Uh, basically, if you're given a point, I hope that...
Yes.
So, the band would be...
Right, right, yeah.
I think it's ten, but I'm not sure. Band be inside, and make sure the noise permit...
Chief, we know anything?
No, I don't personally, but ten P M. I think is, is normal, and, and I don't expect there to be a problem, and I know Mr. Jacob should work with us, and, so we're good with it. Ten P M. is fine with us.
I think it's going to go to Mr. Cook, I believe there's somebody outside by the booth, and so I think by ten, or until there's, uh, a complaint, before then we'll shut them down at that point. That's the stream chief, we'll make sure he doesn't pay. All right, that's the request. What's the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion to approve the request.
Second. Have a motion and a second. So, ten P M., correct, so there's a, uh, complaint. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, on the agenda, the request of Mr. Paul Mouskas to rezonate his property on Second Avenue Northwest near Highway one fifty-seven from currently R one to B two. It states that the planning commission voted unanimously for property to remain at R one and not to be rezoned. Rick, can you give us a, up there on that real quick, and then I...
That is correct. There was a discussion there, and, uh, based on the planning commission's feeling, their recommendation was it remain residential this time.
All right. Can I have, why? Yes, I was going to say, are you Mr. Mouskas? Are you Mr. Mouskas?
Yes.
Yes, please, do you would like to state something, please, before?
Uh, I didn't, apparently, I didn't get here the last meeting, and if I notified, I don't remember, but I was notified this time coming to the meeting, you know, and I was coming prepared to discuss it and see what we could come, or B three, I thought, instead of B two. Uh, the property around me there is, uh, this is B three, but I don't know the difference in B three to B two, but, uh, according to, uh, all I knew is that I had to take the work and, uh, survey and everything set up, so I'm wondering why it was voted unanimously not to be approved for B three or, or B two.
Well, are you looking for options there, or are you trying to get to a B three? Because we can give you options from at this point.
Well, I'm looking for, uh, um, B three, I thought.
Looking for B three, what would you, uh, raise your hand?
I'm very busy, there are...
B three, the main difference between B two and B three are, um, the setback on parking departments and the more, uh, warehouse space to be approved. B three is not allowed out also.
My first time, I mean, I didn't do that. But, uh, you know, when I first came to the, the age, we had a, a street, ten-foot street all the way in front of the property and all of that, and, uh, then it was decided that I had access on each end of the property, and there's two crossovers and four lane there on each end of the property, and that I could buy by having a V three and still put a business on the property.
I don't know that that not looked as detailed, or we have a tour that looks at this detail, and it says unanimously going against the changing to B two. If you're wanting to do, go to B three, which is not what they looked at, Rick, what is his options, or how does he follow that protocol to run his back through the systems of the planning commission?
As I understand it, you're correct, if I'm wrong, it should go to public hearing with the council now to discuss it.
They, they didn't look at B three.
Uh, B two, that's great. I was under impression the adjoining property was B two.
If you must, if you want to consider the B three, then I'll send it back to the planning commission.
Mr. Mouskas, are you asking for B three now?
Well, I can put, uh, a business on the property.
What type of business?
It should be a pharmacy.
If he was going to B two, you wouldn't want to... B, B three is going to require, um, um, more parking, uh, B two is what parks are normally.
But can I get a reconsideration?
Well, well, sir, let me say this, the, the council is not necessarily, uh, obligated to do the planning commission, like we need, because before they can make any decisions whatsoever, they have to, have to advertise it for three weeks in the paper, have to have the public area on it, and obviously, they would need to hold from the, uh, just like the planning commission, they would want to know from the parking head, hold the times, you know, of the property, the physical advantages or disadvantages for B two to B two. Uh, the neighborhood, what, what, what is in the, what's, what, uh, is adjoining the property at this time, and what is being done at this time for the property, for the making decision, I mean, there's a lot of things that...
Well, there's a power station on one side, and a power line behind the property, and, and a business in front of it, you know, there's only two people that own the property as far as housing is concerned, and I don't know if anybody want to build a house and build there.
Mr. Mouskas, I think, uh, we can tell, and everyone else that can, there's a little bit of confusion, and so, uh, from what's on, we're supposed to be in at the same time when you're not being at that last meeting, if you were not notified, we apologize. How about we, uh, subdue, of course, the council, but while we're intending motions to take on this, let you get with our, uh, Mr. Rick Forman, building inspector, in charge of the planning commission. Rick, you talked to Mr. Mouskas, we'll have this on the next agenda. If he needs to go to B three, let's take that back through and put, send it back to the planning commission. If he wants to stay at B two, then you can tell him his options at that time, is okay? Or Mr. Mouskas is okay with you, that way we're all on the same page. Uh, is the planning commission going to meet before our next meeting?
No.
Yeah, okay. Well, if you'll talk next morning, that'd be good. Uh, what's motion to take?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you from Mr. Mouskas for your patient work. On into the agenda, resolutions, ordinances, orders, and other business. Number one is to approve the tax abatement for Loyal Technologies Corporation. It's a pleasure of the council, and this was a little bit of a... Motion to approve and a second. Uh, this is an expansion of four million, as part of discussion, this is part of a four million dollar expansion in equipment, which just secure jobs for the future, and for additional jobs in the future we have. So, we have a motion to adopt and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
You must note that we are not providing any education.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion and a second, all voted, you're correct, aye? That is fast. Um, one second. Number two, under resolutions, it's to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Walker Brothers for renovations to the foyer and administration office in fire station number one, in the budgeted amount not to exceed four thousand dollars. What is the pleasure of the council?
I make it a...
Sir. Have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? Having none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, number three. All right, in a moment, I'll just computer, I apologize. Uh, resolution number three is to award the bid for U V equipment in a budgeted amount of fifty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars to Jim Harrison Associates to the lowest responsible bidder. What is the pleasure of the council on adopting this resolution? I make a motion to adopt this resolution, second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Having none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number four. Number four is a resolution to authorize a change order number three in the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars to the Blue City Garage for upgrading the gas pipes from screwed to welded pipe as required by Foreman Jefferson Gas. What is the pleasure of the council for adopting this resolution? I make a motion to adopt the resolution, second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Having none.
Just, because they won't have overhead crane, and they're, uh, building like flags, and they don't want the parts to flex and the joints and what you can...
Have a roundy while at the same time.
You just like the movie.
Uh, that was fast, I was about to say. Okay, right there, thank you. All right, number five, maybe I can figure it out, you're right over here, down there. There we go. Uh, technology. Number five.
Sacrifice education, that's good.
Uh, number five is to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with same and associates for traffic design of the plans on Fifth Street Southeast, at First Avenue, and Fifth Street Southeast at Second Avenue. What is the pleasure of the council for adopting this resolution?
I make it a...
Motion to approve and a second. Next, have a motion to approve in a second, any further discussion? Again, this is the busy B block on First Avenue, uh, to the end of where the C force was on Second Avenue. Have a motion in a second to adopt, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number six, to authorize the mayor to enter into contract with Saint John and Associates for Fifth Street utility relocation for the additional blocks, which is where the climbed area block is. What is the pleasure of the council in adopting this resolution? I'm going to adopt this resolution, second. Have a motion to adopt in a second, any further discussion? Having none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is adopted. Uh, resolution number seven is to make an application for the airport improvement funding assistance in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That amount of money is a little bit misleading. Johnny, you want to break that down, and somebody likes to, Mayor?
Actually, the project is a five hundred five mile project. The state will pay two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the matching funds is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which, uh, one half the city will pay and the other half the county will pay. So it makes seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the city, and it's adding sixteen teenagers.
Mr. Burnham.
Uh, actually, that will, uh, the money will actually come out of the coffers of the city or the county, because, because there's sixteen people already signed up, and the rent from those people will pay a bank loan.
Awesome.
Be even case.
Adopt Mr. Burnham.
Way, way real loud, thank you, Bob.
Uh, I'm ready.
We have a motion, second. Now we have a new motion.
Okay.
Motion to adopt this resolution from Miss Folsom, and a second from Mr. Cook. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number eight, on the agenda, is an application for the airport improvement funding assistance in the amount of, what it says in the machine, one billion, three hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. And Bob, you want to talk about that, you in for it, Mr. Burnham?
Uh, yes, that's a ninety-five-five FAA grant, which means that the FAA pays ninety-five percent, the state pays two and a half percent, and then two and a half percent is the value between the city and the county, one and a quarter each. And that is in our airport budget already, so it's, uh, covered in that.
So if we, if we receive this grant, the seed's part would be approximately sixteen thousand dollars, is that about right?
Sounds about right. That's...
That's true.
But this is, this is in preparation or to extend the runway and finish the runway with the fire, lighting the fires?
Yeah, that's correct. And this is plenty, or we'll get this back again, you know, after we manipulate it.
I make a motion to adopt, please, second. A motion in a second, we're getting paid sixteen thousand, we're getting one point three million, we'll take that either.
I would love.
Yeah, all in favor of adopting this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And for, this is a lease in the back, anytime the phone goes off, shit, I'm five dollars, Mayor, is that right? Uh, all right. Oh, um, all right. Number nine is a resolution to authorize a renewal lease to the North Alabama Association for Alcoholism, doing business as The Lighthouse Incorporated. Mr. Larry came up earlier and said he'd like to extend that lease just like it is, if the council's in agreement with that, and if we are, you know, what's the pleasure of the council in adopting this resolution?
To adopt.
Motion to adopt, and a second from Miss Folsom, any further discussion? Having none, all in favor of extending this lease, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That has been approved. Thank you for the work you've been up there. Number ten, we have on the agenda is board appointments. Uh, the first board appointment we have... Am I on here, Dr. Count?
I'd like to, to be the Industrial Development Board's CEO, Coleman. I would like to nominate Jeff Field for a reappointment to that board.
Now that's a form of a motion, do we have a second there? A form of a motion to reappoint Jeff Field to the Industrial Development Board. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried. Have any other board appointments?
Mr. President, I'd like to, uh, nominate Mark Busman for reappointing to the Industrial Development Board.
It's in form of a motion, I take it, Mr. Cook?
Yes.
And we have a second? Mr. Clint Hollingsworth, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Yeah. Uh, Mr. Busman, he will be appointed to the Industrial Development Board, a reappointment. Uh, do we have any other board appointments, hold on.
Yes, sir. The president, sir. I'd like to reappoint Hugh Harris, Cat fifty-five.
That's in form of a motion.
I'll second.
We have Miss Folsom, second, and that. All in favor of appointing or reappointing Mr. Hugh Harris to the Cat fifty-five board, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Um, then also, we're into our agenda for the additions that we added to our page, our agenda. Number eleven is a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter a lease with CSX Transportation.
I'm going to accept this.
You have a motion to accept this resolution, do we have a second?
Second, that was keeping the, uh, insurance, the, the insurance detail being worked out.
Anything else, Mayor, or, or, now, are we good? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number twelve that'll be added, which is to authorize the mayor into a contract with Goodneals and Kaywood for professional services, uh, for, um, completing the revolving loan function of the state. What is the pleasure of the council in adopting this resolution? I make a motion to adopt, please, second. Have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And then, number thirteen, we have a resolution to surplus the ladder truck, five oh nine, so that we can place the ladder truck in service. I mean, this truck will be, again, donated to the Fire Association for training for everyone, you can, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of adopting this resolution? Make a motion to adopt, please. Second. And a motion in a second to adopt, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?